Ladies and gentlemen, my host is Lieutenant Derek Cady, Clarence County District.
Evening, thank you everyone. Tonight we've got Pastor David Walsh from the Energy as a Life Church in Bel Rioe to proceed into the prayer.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the service of the Alderman and Mayor and council officers. We thank you for what they give to this community. We continue to pray and uphold this community of Clarence and yeah, we just ask for your leadership, your guidance and your blessing on this community in the future. And for this meeting tonight, we just pray that your wisdom would be here and just decisions that are made would be made well. And there would be some great outcomes tonight in everything that happens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. And before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land we're meeting on tonight and pay our respects to elders past and present. I also need to remind the council and the public that tonight's proceedings will be recorded audio visually and available on the council website later in the week. Clear the meeting open. Apologies from Alderman Campbell. Item two, confirmation of minutes for the 4th of July is circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Alderman Pierce, thank you. Alderman Chong, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Under Mayor's communication, I've got a couple of points. Firstly, I'd like to invite Alderman Bonvoto to present the council a presentation she received representing the Mayor of Clarence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As Chair of the Positive Aging Committee, I would like to present this award to council. We actually won this award at the Local Government Association of Tasmanian Sackrins. And we were the winner of Delivering Excellence for Larger Council. And the award was for the Wake Before Death Project. Just to refresh Alderman and to inform the gallery, the aim of the project was to engage people of all ages and abilities in Clarence in the promotion of and education about end-of-life planning. And this was achieved through the use of a film, which was online, film online on the internet, and also other resources. And what we were actually looking at was building partnerships to inform and educate the community in relation to a topic that we should but rarely do talk about, and that is death and dying and preparation for death and the grief that follow. And I'd actually like to thank the partners. We actually had a grant from the Australian Government, the Better Access Palative Care Programme, provided $47,000. Colleen Johnson from Palative Care Tasmania actually provided us with support in administering the grant. The Warran-Mornington Neighbourhood Centre, particularly Leandoiti, the manager, actually horses and administers the grant. Clarence's Positive Aging Advisory Committee provided members for the working group. And our community development officer, one of our community development officers, Julie Anderson, also provided support. Sally Mollison from Cell Mutations Music Therapy, Andrew Del Vecchio of Double C Media, Fairway Rise Retirement Village, particularly Carol Joseph, coordinator, Tash Schleder from Community Conversations, the Clarence Positive Aging Network, Mona Foma, curator of Brian Ritchie, and the various members of the communities who actually told their stories. So this is an award that was actually well won and we hope to actually continue the project with further funding that we hope to actually get from the Tasmanian Community Fund and we also have it now.
And I'd just like to add that anecdote, or the informal feedback we got after the award from other councillors and mayors was that they thought that this was a terrific programme and so on behalf of everyone, I'd like to congratulate the Positive Aging Committee and the whole programme for attracting that award. The second item I want to raise was that on the 15th of July, I attended a briefing on the Tasman Bridge conducted under Bill Lawson and a few of the engineers who have been involved in the reconstruction of the bridge. They felt that the risk situation to the bridge from a ship collision was significant and needed to be investigated. Our table and information sheet that they provided at that meeting in regard to that was already written to the government through Senator Avets and he's raised it with the Minister for Infrastructure in Canberra. So hopefully, and I've also put on the agenda for the Southern Tasmanian Council's authority. So hopefully we can get some sort of project going to carry, update that risk assessment, the bridge from ship collision. One I want to make, and I'm sure that's reasonably well known anyway, is that Alderman Chong has been elected as the member to the GMC representing Clarence, Dunawki and Kingra. So congratulations. Okay, item four, that council notes the workshops conducted on the 11th and 18th of July and the agenda read on the 22nd of July. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Second, Alderman Purley. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Are there any declarations? None. Tabling of petitions, there are none on the agenda. Do we have any petitions from the floor? Item seven is public question time. There are no matters on notice. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Thank you. Item eight, deputations by members of the public. General Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We only have, we're down to only one speaker this evening. And that's Ken McGivern from down at EDI, who wishes to address council in relation to the new Ashwell plant application place that I'm telling.
I do need to remind you, we're only able to provide three minutes and there'll be a bell who'll stay on about two and a half minutes.
So look, I could go through the whys and the wherefore's. Will you, people have got a copy of the proposal and the application that has been done? What we're more sort of looking at and the driver behind what we're trying to achieve is the fact that the Ashwell plant was originally built in 1985. So from an Ashwell plant perspective, it's very old, very old technology. Downer, the pillars of Downer are all about sustainability and environmental sustainability. So from that point of view, we're trying to bring modern, up-to-date technology into the area. But also the main driver is about resource sustainability and it's a big thing for us going forward and it really drives us. So there's been a lot of work on the mainland that's been done in developing a lot of sustainable products, including tonopave and the like. That we want to introduce to Tasmania. We can't do it with the old technology. We need a modern, up-to-date plant that's going to enable us to do it. The other thing that drives that too is also employment. So we've just employed a new labour technician as part of that process and we'll be looking to employ more people as that goes on. So that's fairly much what's driving us. I'm very mindful of the timeframe. Like to answer a lot more questions if you guys have got questions, but yeah, I could talk on it for a couple of hours. But yeah, it's just more about what's driving us to do it. So we're investing $4.2 million into the local economy. There's a lot of, we're already seeing a lot of local trades that have now been used or set up to be used as part of the building process. So you know, hopefully that'll put a lot of work back into the economy. And then it helps us then to start talking to councils about sustainability of their roads, reducing costs in terms of what it costs to put Ashwell down on the road. That's that type of initiative. All right, thank you.
No motions on notice. Reports from outside bodies. 10.1, reports from single joint authorities, Southern Tasmanian Council Authority, the court report for March, and I guess now June is pending. The copying refusal of site joint authority, Alderman Cusick, have you got anything to report there in Alderman Campbell's absence? Anything to report on the copying waste authority? Southern Waste Strategy Authority, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The question of us winding down the authorities in train. I would like to make the announcement that the Chairman and myself, councillor Alex Green and myself as Deputy Chair will not be seeking appointment to the Regional Waste Group. We both had our reasons for that and over the next month or so, we will be undertaking a number of matters relating to the purpose of the financial year. Also, the courtly report, that's due and I'll make the necessary steps to have that presented at the next council meeting.
And there's nothing to report in regard to Tasmanian Water Corporation. 10.2 is reports from council on special committees and other representative bodies. Firstly, the audit panel, that the Chair's person's report be received. Thank you. Second, Alderman Pierce, do you wish to speak to it?
No, thank you.
Any other questions? For most men, that that report be received. All those in favour? Against Kerry. The second is Bicycle Steering Committee, that the Chair person's report be received. Thank you, the second, Alderman Pierce, thank you. Any speakers? All those in favour? Kerry unanimously. The Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, that the Chair's report be received. Thank you, Alderman Farne. Second, Alderman James.
Briefly to that, Mr Mayor, the advisory committee report is attached, is circulating. I might add that there is still discussion about the standoff that's developed between the process and also the four-shore trail from Rokeby to Lordedale. It seems as though there's no sort of end in sight in relation to this. There has been a paper circulated by a member of the committee which will be discussed at our next meeting. I think you've received a copy of that in the mail recently. And it would appear that there is no connection between Lordedale and Rokeby other than along the highway and that is a matter for the Department of State Growth. The other one, four-shore trial that's being considered is in fact the Blessington Street and that has been all since the process of being constructed. And also the question of the Tangara Trail, that's on the Ross Common track. That is in fact, has to be extended around the northern perimeter of Ross Common. And the Archery Club agreed to relocate six targets to accommodate the trail. So we have this missing link between the south and the north. Personally, I just don't know where we're going to go with this. There is some conflicting statements from a department, from another department within the state government. So look, at the moment, we've got other business to attend to and I think we'll be spending most of our time on trying to get the links from the south. Can't avoid that link between Lordedale and Rokeby, but nevertheless, the long-term plan is in fact from some point at the Clarence municipality up to Bridgewater, around and down the western side. The long-term vision and see what the councils are working to that end. Thank you.
Any other speakers? So the motion is that the Chair's report be received. All those in favour? Against Kerry. Next report is the National Resource Management Committee, that the report be received. Thank you, Alderman Farne. Second, Alderman, thank you. Do you wish to speak to it?
Just in the context that this is a new initiative from the staff, obviously feeling left out of our reporting. And I would like Alderman to note that within the context of this report, I've had a meeting with staff about the CAT programme that hopefully we will initiate by the end of the year. So any good ideas that you want to bring forward, send them to Justin. Thank you.
Most men is that we receive that report. All those in favour? Kerry unanimously. And are there any other reports? Alderman Hume.
Here I have the minutes of the Business Ex-Court Management Meeting for June this year.
I have the monthly meeting minutes for Bel Rioe Community Arts Centre and for the Disability Access Advisory Committee.
Pardon me. Moving on to 11.1, that the information contained in the weekly briefing reports for the 4th, 11th and 18th of July in over. Thanks, Alderman Hume. Second, Alderman Purley. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I draw council's attention to the weekly briefing reports of the 4th of July, the 11th and the 18th. And dealing first of all with the 4th of July and the roads programme. The question I have of you, in fact, I think it's to Mr Stevens in his capacity as the manager of asset management and who is actually the author of this memo to us. Sorry, Mr Mayor, to Mr Stevens. Mr Stevens, the carryovers from 2015-16 are listed in the four dot points that are enclosed within this document. Is that all there are? It just seems to me that there have been a number of other projects that haven't met this list. So could I say clarification from him? And I refer to the Toppin Street reconstruction, Granville Avenue, Curbin Gutter, the Seven Mile Beach upgrade and the Rosney Hill Mall pavement rehabilitation.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. I understood originally that the issue was the major construction projects wanting to be in the briefing report. There are a number of other minor projects within the total roads programme such as safety works associated with traffic management, but I didn't include those because I thought you were only interested in the construction works in the last report. So I'm not quite sure if that's now what you want or you would prefer the whole list of all the carryovers.
Yeah, well, look, I apologize if that wasn't clear at the time because I thought, just looking at these four projects, Mr Stevens, three, Mr Stevens, that they were the only ones. And I know that we have a number of projects of quite a considerable amount of money that are in fact still carryovers from the previous financial year.
It's a comprehensive list of carryovers.
Yes.
Or we can take that on notice.
The other matter is in relation to the 11th of July, the tree removal on the Bel Rioe Beach, on page 26. Again, my question I think is to Mr Stevens. The location of the tree that's shown on the attachment seems to me to be in the way of the construction that's going to occur in relation to the new playground equipment. And it seems to me that there may have been disturbance of the roots, sorry, Mr Mayor, to Mr Stevens, in relation to that tree being in the way. Is that the fact of the matter or is it just the way that it just seems to show in the report?
For you, Mr Mayor, as was indicated, it looks very important. There were several photos showing the cracks all around the tree following the wind event on the other, that's what it was, I'm not quite sure. The tree was in an emergency, whether it was nearby or not nearby, it was certainly stated relevant that it was imminent danger to the public safety with the tree falling.
Finally, on the 18th.
Sorry, that's fine. I think.
So you're seeking a third question?
Yes, I did intimate on the 18th of July.
Right.
Yes.
Please go ahead, Alderman James.
Thanks very much. On the 18th of July, under sewage treatment lagoons at Cambridge Road, 840, on page two. Again, through you, Mr Stevens, in his capacity as manager of asset management. Mr Stevens, the site has now received contaminated site sign-off. The council can proceed with redevelopment land sale options. Does that mean now that we can business on the open market and get a return on our investment?
For you, Mr Mayor, it's not quite a simple fact. The council originally made a decision several years ago to sell that land and subdivide that land as part of one way of all yoke, but since that time, council's looked at the plan and has indicated that. So until that gets resolved, which will be in the next couple of months.
Discussion on the weekly reports have been the case, so I've put the motion that the information contained in and be noted. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.2, there's nothing on the agenda in that regard. So I now advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning Approvals Act. First item's 11.3.1, it's a development application at 723 and 723 A. S. Unit Drive, Premier for a dwelling. Thanks, Alderman Pierce. Second, Alderman Pierce. Do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, just with me there, I'm just going to get a representative. The representation was to deal with the issue of stall water runoff. And as a proposal development, make the acceptable solutions to the Stall Water Management Code. And in the event of anything other than that, it will, you know, become the jurisdiction of the channel to the building and plumbing permit anyway. So I think that's a good result. And Alderman Cusick.
I need to say, it seems to be inappropriate development in this location of the bank block land.
If a rider of Alderman Pierce, the motion then, per, subject to assistance and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.2 is a development application at 24 North of Dry Power for a dwelling. Alderman Farne, thank you. Alderman Walker, thanks. Do you care to speak to it?
I just support the recommendation.
Most, all those in Kerry, in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 11.3.3 is a development application at 77 Atago Bay for a dwelling. Alderman Farne, thank you. Alderman Hume, speakers. Motion then, all those in favour, for approval? Against Kerry. 11.3.4 is a development application at 9 Corrin Street, Harrow, for demolition and a new dwelling. Thanks, Alderman Walker. Second, Alderman Cusick, do you speak to it?
Yes. Fair to say that there's many desirable areas throughout our municipality. I think this street is coming to increasing attention of a lot of people. As such, the proponent is looking at putting a new dwelling on the site. I am not, I am mindful, I should say, that if you're neighboring such a dwelling and you're seeing some change in an area, that's something that you may prefer not to happen. However, consolidation does happen and patterns change. And I believe that the development that's been put here has worked its way through the process and it's acceptable and appropriate construction and we should support it.
The comment on page 96, which refers to the setback and the building envelope for dwellings. The proposal is a small portion of the dwellings outside the building envelope on the southern facade. And this is approximately 0.2 metres in height, approximately 1 metre in width. The acceptable solutions say otherwise because it should be contained within a building envelope and determined by a projection aligned with an angle accepted from the horizontal at a height of 3 metres above the natural ground level. The question that comes out of this is that it has to, the acceptable solutions, it's not causing the unreasonable loss of amenity by the reduction in sunlight. But the portion of the building that is outside the building envelope, according to the officers, is negligible and therefore cannot cause unreasonable overshadowing. Question here arises is that we've had this before at council where it's outside the building envelope. And we have chosen to proceed to approve it. And it just seems as though that we get to a situation where we have the acceptable solutions. Then we have the performance criteria and that for the very nature of determining as to whether or not it is acceptable or otherwise is, in my view, more of a subjective account than really what we should be considering as far as what is reasonable and what does detract from the building as far as the other property owners are concerned. Under the standard for sunlight and overshadowing, again, the acceptable solution must have at least one habitable room other than the bedroom in which there is a window that faces between 30 degrees west of north and 30 degrees east of north. The living dining room will have a window approximately 36 degrees west of north. The performance criteria says that this isn't an issue, that the proposed building is orientated to achieve sunlight to the habitable areas. Well, it doesn't say that in the acceptable solutions because it says that it has to be 30 degrees east of the north. Whereas what's being proposed is 36 west of north. Now, that may seem to be a minor thing. But at the same time, how far do we go when we are trying to make sure that the impact on adjoining properties is looked after in relation to these developments? I cannot support this because I think we need to make a stand, and I've said in a number of instances in this place, that if there that if there is a, a, a direction as far as acceptable solutions concerned, and in my view, as elected representative and basically concerned about the impact this will have on an adjoining property owner, then I will not support it. And again, the performance criteria in relation to this is subjective, I believe, and therefore I will not support the recommendation.
Mr Mayor, uh, I refer to, uh, the council's page ninety-nine, uh, P two. A window or glazed door to a habitable room or dwelling that has a floor that will hold one metre of the ground must, not maybe, must be screened or otherwise located or designed to minimize direct effect. And then it goes on to say, because the window setback is, um, four point nine metres from the adjacent dwelling. And, uh, as such, the overlook in the habitable room is not only to do with, well, four point nine five is about to meet all the Maggots away. I mean, I mean, you'd have to be blind free not to, uh, be able to see that. And it goes on to say, uh, if the provisions of the. That these provisions do not adequately comply with the performance criteria. And with that, never the word is used, but if you look up the dictionary, you must, by definition, it can be applied to a pound by an interior requirement. You say, how can you say it must be, but because it's four point five nine metres away, without having to worry about it? Oh, I think it's, it's a direct conflict of law. I can't support this motion.
Other speakers?
Okay. Now, I understand that, um, this application, that there actually, there was one representation received from a neighbour. And I understand that, um, there've actually been discussions going on between, uh, the neighbour and the, and the proponent of this development. And, um, whatever the outcome of this today, there, there may actually be an amendment lodged, um, to meet some concerns of that neighbour. I think, I think it's a, that's a good gesture by, um, the proponent of the development to do that. Um, having said that, that should have no bearing on our consideration of this application. This application stands as submitted. Um, but one of the things I, I would point out, um, in relation to, to Alderman Dawson, Alderman James's comments, is that, uh, when we're considering, um, performance criteria, one of the, the principles in, um, dealing with planning applications, is we not only consider whether the performance criteria are met, but also, uh, whether, if the development was altered in some way to meet this acceptable solution, would that have a significant impact on the development's compliance with performance criteria? And in this case, uh, when you're dealing with a separation of four point nine five metres, I understand that that isn't a, a very large separation. Um, you could actually comply with the acceptable solution by moving development of three hundred millimetres. I understand that the, the setback referred to there is three metres. Um, at the moment, it's setback two point seven metres. Uh, so you're talking about another three hundred millimetres and, and the developer actually complies with the acceptable solution. When they do that, the performance criteria then doesn't, um, come into account. So when you talk about an extra three hundred millimetres on top of four point nine five metres, it's not that, that significant. And I think, I think we need to understand that there have been developments, um, approved by this council. I, I know there's some that have been proved under delegated authority, where a performance criteria and acceptable solution failed to be met. But the officers then take into consideration, would the performance criteria actually met if, if there was a amendment, um, to, to meet the acceptable solution? And if the answer is no, you can actually approve that development. And I think a, a similar thing applies when it comes to that question of overshadowing. It's not just the question of is the overshadowing of development significant? But is it significant in the context of the area of the building that's outside the building envelope? And the officers have noted that it is actually a very small portion. Um, and therefore, the question isn't so much, is the overshadowing significant? But is the overshadowing of that portion outside the envelope significant? So I think we, I think we need to understand that, that these sort of considerations, uh, come into our, our, um, approval or otherwise of, uh, planning proposals or development applications, that it's, it's not just about whether the performance criteria are met, but also about what impacts the, um, meeting the acceptable solution, if, if there was some minor amendment would have on the, on that performance criteria. Would it make any difference? Because what's the point in rejecting an, an application based on a performance criteria that's not met, criterion that's not met? If the developer then just puts in a fresh application with some minor amendment and meets the acceptable solution? So, uh, that's something I think we need to understand and take into consideration with this development. Having said that, um, I can understand the neighbour's concerns. Um, and I understand that, you know, out, out of being neighbourly, there has to come some agreement anyway that down, down the track of an amended application will be put in. And I think, I think that's a, a good outcome because, you know, you don't, you don't want to end up in, in conflict with your neighbours. Um, and I, I, I would encourage anyone with any development, um, you know, when negotiating with their neighbours to, you know, to come to those agreements regardless of what the, um, what our planning scheme says. Um, because, you know, it's, it's good for neighbourly relations.
Thank you.
I thank you, Mr Mayor, and I, I've contributed to the debate. Uh, I'd like to in particular thank Alderman Hume for his things in the present being, bit being around the overshadowing of the bit that's protruding outside the envelope. The envelope of this proposal, uh, was discussed, uh, by two contributors. And I think it's really important to cast your eyes to attachment three. Now, we see a variety of proposals come before us in the chambers, uh, sometimes pushing, sometimes totally breaking through the envelope. This is hardly at the upper end. This, there is bucket loads of, um, area within the envelope that, that haven't been utilised. It's not a case of making the most maximum utilisation of what's allowed. It's to do with the design, to do with the structure. They're not pushing it. There's a slight nudge in one corner, but it's not by any means breaking through. And we really need to figure out the ramifications about objecting to such a modest, uh, a modest variation. Seek support.
The motion before the chair is the office's recommendation, which is for approval with subject to conditions and advice, all those in favor. Against, motion is carried. Seven point three point five is a development application at Two Clardy Road, Rosney for alterations and additions to a dwelling. Thank you. Do we have a second, Alderman Van Verta? Uh, you wish to speak to it? Alderman Van Verta? Other speakers? Alderman James? I have a question and I'd like to see clarification from Mr Lowell. Uh, Mr Lowell, on page one hundred and seventeen, the standard setback and building envelope for all dwellings is, is, um, squished that they are under acceptable solutions. Uh, the proposed, the garage is located two hundred millimetres from the front boundary at its closest point. A garage or carport must have a setback up from the primary frontage of at least five point five metres, alternatively, one metre behind facade and dwelling. Having said that, if we turn to page one hundred and eighteen, it says the proposed variation does not meet performance criteria P one, of course, ten point four point four for following reasons. And in that, under comment, the last paragraph, it says, and I quote, "It should be noted that the primary reason why garage setbacks are dealt with separately from dwelling setbacks is to ensure that garages do not dominate streetscapes, which is considered a bad neighbourhood design outcome." Unquote. My question through you to Mr Lowell is that, am I reading it correctly? That the performance criteria does not support or give cleats to the acceptable solution in this regard?
Um, so you're saying that was, that criteria in alternative terms?
Yes.
In this case, it does comply with the performance criteria.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Alderman Q six?
Mr Mayor, through you, Mr Mayor, I'm going to, to Mr Lowell. Council officers have recommended refusal of this application on grounds that's not compatible with existing, uh, street scape due to setback. Officers have, on occasions related to applications where officers recommend approval, pointed out that if we refused it and went to tribunal, it may well be overturned. In, in this case, it goes to tribunal. In your opinion, would there be any basis for the tribunal to overturn?
To you, sir, you can't, as you said, there's not much experience with, um, progressions in P four point one, as you said here. However, it was very clear to us, you know, in making this recommendation, that it does comply and it can be very difficult to, we're knowing that around, uh, in private.
Yeah, the speaker, sorry, you've spoken, I think, Alderman. Well, look, now, we know Dian told him Q six, you can't have another bite of the chair, I'm sorry.
I, I did ask a question.
Yeah, you did, and that counts as your time on your feet. Sorry, absolutely it does. Uh, any other, any other speakers?
That's news to me.
Okay, um, right of reply, uh.
I look forward to the outcome of this issue. I'm sure we're going to be on a very deep note.
Okay, the, uh, recommendation before the chair is for a refusal of this application, all those in favor. Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point six is a development application at four one five and four twenty-nine Flagstaff Gully Road for replacement of an asphalt plant. Uh, we'll take Alderman Pierce, second of all, and Q six. Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, there. Uh, this is a question on asphalt plant. We've already had the speaker tonight confirm what they intend to do. And, uh, we all know the bottom line, uh, where it is. It's been working successfully for years now. And there's been one representation, which I think are adequately answered by our staff in the comments, so I support this recommendation.
Yes, I, I support it also. It's a continuation of the exist, exist, existing use on a larger scale. The area is owned appropriately and it's introduction of modern technology. So.
Other speakers? Gordon Charlie?
Um, Mr Mayor, I support this, um, application because it, uh, it's an improvement. It's a major piece of infrastructure that's going to actually modernise the operations of the plant. Uh, the EPA has addressed a number of, um, environmental issues. It can only be an improvement. And there have been indications that, uh, any operations outside of normal operating hours will be at the approval of the EPA as well under conditions.
Speakers? Um, take Alderman Walker and then Alderman Farne.
Look, I indeed intend to vote in support of this. I think the, the environmental issue has been addressed. The planning side's been addressed. Separate to that, uh, it has been noted by the speaker and other Alderman that it is investment, investment's a good thing. Uh, separate to that, I guess, is, um, perhaps some self-interest on behalf of council, which is, uh, more productive and efficient. Um, practices in this place might improve competitive processes when we can get it through. So, um, not a risk to pay for it, but a nice, nice side of it.
Alderman Farne?
I do support the application, but I feel that we have, um, there is a need for a consideration of the, um, speed limits in that area. Um, representations talk about the speed brakes. There is a new subdivision going in right alongside that road. I saw no indication of buffer zone or noise tension. And the intersection coming downhill from.
Begonia.
Begonia, thank you very much, has proven to be dangerous at times. So I'm sure that the applicant could consider looking and talking with staff and council about the lowering of the speed limit along that bottom section of the road, continuous to the hill as it turns around the corner and coming up to the intersection of Begonia Street. Because I think that, have we had some discussions on this, Mr Lowell? No, okay. I'll leave it to Mr Lowell to, to, to those discussions because that is the bulk of the problem in that area when we get the new subdivision coming up the noise level of traffic that is increasing three times.
Right of reply to Alderman Pierce? Thank you, the motion then is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favor. Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point seven is a development application at three one three one South Arm Road for demolition of existing dwelling and three multiple dwellings. Second of please, Alderman Hume, thank you. Second of Alderman Chong, speakers. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, agreed here.
The comment that I would like to make firstly, and then a question to Mr Lowell, is regarding the car parking spaces that, um, have been spilt out in the, in this, um, particular matter. We do have a car parking code, which in fact is what we've almost religiously adhered to over the years and so forth. And, uh, I was, um, interested to read the performance criteria when in some detail in relation to why there is a requirement for car parking. Uh, given the nature and the location of this particular, uh, development, but Mr Lowell explained why council started not to assume the seven car parking spaces that is actually listed in the code. James, did you want to speak to this, having asked a question?
Uh, look, uh, one of you, Mr Mayor, to actually allow me to follow up. I just want a clarification on that particular point. I have no other questions.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, look, I intend to support these officers' recommendations. And I think, uh, it's interesting to note under the new planning scheme that when concerns are being raised, alternate motions don't seem to, uh, be circulated beforehand. I don't know whether there's a direct correlation with that or whether that's just changes over the course of time. I'll be supportive.
Other speakers?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, my understanding about the, the parking issue is that the, uh, application was actually, uh, submitted to comply with the parking requirement. The proponents sought, um, a reduction in, uh, the number of car parking spaces, um, but was advised, this is how I understand, the report was advised by the officers that they, they wouldn't recommend support for the application on that, on that basis. And therefore, the application stands meeting the car parking requirement. I hope that.
The recommendation is the office's, uh, recommendation for approval, all those in favor. Carried unanimously, and that concludes our business as a planning authority. There's nothing under customer service, under asset management. Eleven point five point one, which is that council got the Roper Hills Bushland Reserve Activity Plan for twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Thank you, Alderman James, do you have a second, uh? Alderman Q six, thank you. Would you like to speak to it?
Obviously, very brief, Mr Mayor, because we have discussed this at the workshop and I'm not getting into the fine detail about as to whether a bus stop should be added here there or on Tom Cott.
here there, or Tom Cotton, all I want to say is that I think the staff have done an excellent job, it ties up some loose ends, and it shifts that, what we call that greenbelt, straight up the course where it should go, and I know that there is some deviation in the pathway, which, okay, I think that is commendable, in which is being discussed at our workshop, and also incorporated in this, I seek council support.
Oh, and I just support, uh, Alderman James's comments.
Thank you, other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman James? Uh, the motion is that we adopt the Bushland Reserve Activity Plan, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Nothing under financial management, under governance, eleven point seven point one, that the quarterly report to the thirtieth of June of twenty sixteen be received. Alderman Chong, second there. Alderman Von Berta, thank you, uh, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you.
Would you like to speak to it? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I have a couple of questions which I've identified within the quarterly report, and I refer to page seventeen of the quarterly report, and it says on the top of the page, the Belray Breakwater, throwing you to the, uh, general manager, Mr. Paul, is Mr. Paul able to give an update on where we stand with this, given the matter is obviously going through different quarters and with different agencies and so on, but perhaps an up-to-date account might be the order of the day, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, free, Mr. Mayor, the, the Breakwater, um, was planning, uh, development application for Breakwater was advertised, there are a number of submissions received, some of which were from government departments, um, they are now closed, um, a preliminary assessment of the proposal has been made, and I think some further information's been sought, and it's currently, I suppose, in, on, in hold, on hold, in limbo, between, uh, applications closing and being reported to council at some stage in the not-too-distant future, I would expect.
My second question is in relation to page forty five, uh, in relation, regards to the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area, uh, free, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Paul, uh, given the discussion so far, is Mr. Paul able to revise council of where we are with this, and also, uh, as to whether or not we can expect a development application within the next couple of months, or if there is a possibility for it now to be presented in the new year, or at all?
Um, free, Mr. Mayor, just to update council, that I, that we're currently in a position where, um, we're awaiting the proponent to lodge a development application, uh, I have met with them in recent times, it's my expectation that they will submit a, sometime within the next few months, but as to the exact timing of that, I'm not across that, that's purely up to them in terms of developing their application at this stage.
And, uh, I would then, uh, for you to Mr. Paul, um, has there been any discussions about downsizing at all in this, with this regard, or is it still a matter for, uh, the developers?
Well, at this stage, that is entirely a matter for the developers, but I do understand that they're, um, uh, I'll say tinkering with the design to try and ensure that the actual scale of the development, uh, results in an affordable development proposal coming forward.
Any other questions on the, uh, quarterly report? Okay, so, I'll put the motion that it be received, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thanks. Seven point seven point two is the revised constitution for the Harrow Community Centre. Alderman Chong, thank you, and Alderman Thirley, would you like to speak to it?
Just very briefly to say the President came to the workshop and discussed the reasons for the, for the changes that are proposed, and I seek council support.
Uh, just to say, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, from the presentation by the President, it's obvious that there's a new level of enthusiasm and a degree of, uh, desire to get the case functioning at its greatest capacity, and that's a very positive thing.
Question, uh, the recommendation that we, uh, adopt the revised constitution, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point seven point three is the, uh, that CCC. I won't go any further, Alderman Hume. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm really, uh, the, well, hopefully, kind of, uh, coming to the council, I'd like to thank, um, my colleagues on the council for all their input into the plan, um, I'd like to thank those who made submissions through the consultation process, I must say, I was surprised by the amount of submissions from, um, agencies and departments, um, rather than the business community, and I, I must express it, just a, a tinge of disappointment at the fact that there wasn't more input from, from the business community and the public at large, because I think this is something that really affects us all, you know, we're all concerned about economic development and jobs in Clarence City, uh, but what's come out of it, um, I think has been a very good document, I'd like to thank the council officers who are involved, um, Mr. Walker and, and Mr. Richardson, I'd also like to thank the consultant, um, Martin Farley, uh, for his excellent work on the plan, um, in a lot of ways, we've approved the plan, I, I certainly liked the, the input on, uh, technology and innovation, I think that's very important, uh, and going forward from here, uh, once we start working on the implementation of this plan, I think some really exciting things can come out of this, for the city of Clarence and, and for the businesses here, and particularly for, uh, residents who are concerned about their job prospects and, and their economic future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The motion then, to the officer's recommendation, which is that we adopt the, uh, County Council Development Plan for twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Alderman Thorpe is Alderman's question in time, and there's no other on notice, question for that notice, can you start with the, uh, Alderman Von Berta?
Like to know whether or not we have had any further work done on mitigating the Kangaroo Bay.
Is that, I think, this, uh, question, uh, for you, Mr. Mayor, I, the microphone cut out, but Alderman Von Berta, but I imagine about this skate park is the first.
Particularly graffiti.
Several, um, weeks ago, they produced a briefing report that dealt with a whole series of problems, the skate park, and we suggested, um. There's about weeks or so, our staff are still spending, uh, half an hour every day, um, cleaning.
Mayor, second question, would we be able to have a briefing at our workshop in relation to the removal of a tree, or the refusal of a removal of a tree at a hundred and thirty foot radius?
Our barbecues, are our barbecues got timers on yet, so they come on, or they can't come on?
Free, Mr. Mayor, I don't think they have timers, I think they're just, um, coin-operated or whatever at the appropriate time, I don't think there's timers on the barbecues per se.
So they take some time?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, when you, when you start it, it has an automatic burn period, but I think your question was more, is are they able to be used at various times throughout the day?
And I just followed it on, like, government comments, talked to a person that had the barbecues, and they were saying that we were having trouble with ours, and he said, well, why don't you put timers on it, so they go off as soon as they can? Alderman, uh, Mr. Mayor, there was, um, it was alluded to this in draft legislation by the state government regarding, uh, abandoned or derelict buildings and rubbish accumulation, were they ever going to bring legislation that enforce them to, uh, clean those sort of messes up? We've got quite a few around this, apparently unwanted, if that legislation is very enacted and released ahead, will it or when will be?
Free you, Mr. Mayor, um, the legislation is in place, been in place for some time, um, in terms of that.
In recent times, the Minister for Local Government makes statements on Talkback Radio, relating to Taz Water performance or lack thereof and funding is a responsibility of councils, there's a maximum, that, a maximum that states that you cannot have responsibility unless you have some level of administrative control, does Clarence Council or councils collectively have any administrative authority on Taz Water? Can we collectively as council, or as a group of councils, tell Taz Water where to apply expenditure or prioritise program, and if not, this ownership is merely a product of government legislation? So, can, we, the minister is saying councils are responsible for funding of Taz Water, can, do, do we have any, any input or any authority over where they spend their money and their budgeting, et cetera?
Um, free, Mr. Mayor, um, perhaps try and answer the question in, in this manner, um, the minister has corrected the extent that the councils actually own Taz Water. On a day-to-day basis, Taz Water's operations are, um, under the control of a normal executive, but under the control of a, a, uh, a, a, an appointed board, that board is independent, however, is appointed by the owner councils to oversee the operations of Taz Water. Instructing that board in the day-to-day or the strategic management of the corporation is undertaken mainly by means of what is called shareholder's letter of expectation, which is an advisory document to the board from the owners, represented by the shareholder, the owners' representative group, who together, who on behalf of the twenty-nine owner councils provide this strategic advice to the board. The shareholder's letter of expectation doesn't go to the extent of, um, uh, mandating, stipulating, or outlining where the owner councils want the funds to be expended, but certainly does go to the extent of outlining the strategic direction and the themes that they want the board to pursue on our behalf, so it doesn't extend to saying, we want this project done ahead of this one, but it does talk about, you know, um, improving water supplies, meeting environmental requirements, meeting community expectation, et cetera, et cetera, so there is a mechanism for, um, an informal, not informal, it's a formal process, but it's not day-to-day control, it's more, um, influencing the strategic direction of the board, so I hope that's answered your question.
Use a copy of the letter of expectation on Taz Water workshop.
I was going to ask about the Kangaroo Bay Skate Park and Van La Merism, but Alderman Von Berta helped jump on me on that one. Um, I do have a question, though, about, uh, rubbish that, um, sort of escapes from, from bins when they're, when they're put out, those, you know, residential bins, um, you know, particularly on windy days, and, uh, you know, tidying that up, is there anything that council can, can do in that area?
Free you, Mr. Mayor, as I said previously, there are eight bins there currently.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, wrong question, John, sorry, the question, the question is when we, when people put their bins out for collection, and they blow over in the wind, and the rubbish blows everywhere, does council have any responsibility or the contractor any responsibility for picking up that rubbish?
Uh, no, basically, the bins, uh, belong, and the rubbish belongs to the resident until the truck is there to pick it up, and at that point, ownership.
I can just add further to that, however, I am aware of occasions where there's, um, been just a general excessive amount of rubbish in a neighbourhood, that's aggregated in a park or something as a response, result of that, we then have sent crews in to actually tidy up that, that area.
Uh, second question, Mr. Mayor, um, I understand that there, I, I think so, there's some kind of, uh, review or investigation going on into the utilisation of council-owned, um, halls and community centres and those sort of areas, um, you know, if there's.
Um, free you, Mr. Mayor, um, there is such a review going on, but it's only covering a relatively select range of council facilities within the Belray, Rosney Park precinct, um, my understanding is the study report is pretty much finished, and will hopefully be coming back to council with a visit, but it does, it doesn't extend to all council halls and facilities, it was only, um, designed to look at those high-use, or, you know, no, I won't say high-use, because that's the wrong term, um, the, the council facilities within that Belray precinct.
And that'll be the workshop.
That'll be the workshop in, um, in the not-too-distant future.
Alderman Palmer?
Uh, yes, I have two questions, one, I have a former member of the Traxton Town committee, which looks at the issue of the coastal trail issues from Ropie to Lordedale, it was addressed to yourself, and I would like to have this circulated amongst all the Aldermen, followed up by a workshop. followed up by a workshop. Mr Landon.
Okay, well, the only real response to that, John, have you said that?
Okay. From my perspective, this is an issue which includes the municipal committee.
This question's time.
Okay. Well, I would like to see this in a workshop.
Oh, I think I should read the first line of the agreement.
No, I'll put a motion to council. The other question is in relation to the report back to council regarding the Belray bluff conditions. The...
Oh, you know, very...
Yeah, yeah.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'm going to workshop with the hearing, the draft amendment to accompany that. The council consideration. We completed that at the house and we sent it to the architecture team to study. Give me the verification of that.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. In your absence at the last meeting that was held, I asked a question to the general manager, which elicited a response that the name Think South is no longer in use despite the southern Tasmanian councils authority. Now, scarce rate payers' contributions are given from this council to make STCA operate. The Think South brand was actually that rate payer's money being given to consultants that came up with the name. And the question is, given the waste of money and the folly in that, what as are representative, what are your learnings from that? And what will you be taking to STCA and seeking from STCA? So money isn't wasted in such an absurd fashion again. That wasn't a good idea, Mr Mayor, in separate to that. No, 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 in full sight, that wasn't a good idea to use an abstract name of no connection with councils whatsoever. So I guess my second question to you relating to that is finding out why when such a thing was undertaken now, it wasn't cursorily divulged, I guess, at the council level to seek advice on whether we also thought it was a wise thing to do.
Yes, I have two questions, Mr Mayor, and I think they are to Mr Stevens and his capacity of asset management. Mr Stevens, in what circumstances would council's work gang supervisor, who's currently overseeing the current footpath repair schedule, being relocated, his gang being relocated to fix a footpath where elderly people negotiate a broken footpath pavement on the approach to the church at Monique Bay?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I think the question was in what circumstances would we change the priority of repairs for Monique Bay? Basically, I think we've outlined several Aldermen's replies. When people write to us about footpath damage, we have a list from 2016, shared repairs in seven categories.
To me, there's a rundown in our state of our roads within the city in some areas. Have, has your area, Mr Stevens, identified major digouts in this financial year? For St Helen's Street, Lindis Farms, South Terrace, Lauderdale and sections of past road?
As I indicated before in the briefing, what is issued with what's it or will be adapted to the 2016, 2017 digout and major reconstruction program are being investigated as we speak and those processes will... About November and that will come, so I'll notice what we generally do as part of this for that, at that time, the council, we let them know.